Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Seneca County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for October 10th. Can I get a roll call of the members, please?
Supervisor Reynolds. Supervisor Jeffrey Trout. Supervisor Brownell. Supervisor Barnhart. Supervisor Borst. Supervisor Hayes. Supervisor Ferrara. Supervisor Cronenwater. Supervisor Reinhardt. Supervisor Partee. Supervisor Heisen. Supervisor Don Trout. Supervisor Enzlo.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley. You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Free, Public, and Civil Rights of Independence, under God, in the name of our representative, the President, of this country, the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you, everyone. All right. First up, we have a public hearing for Local Law 7G of the year 2023, setting the salaries for the current elected officials. County public...
To a public meeting?
Got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public hearing is now open.
Do you want to speak at the public hearing? If you want to speak...
Nope.
Make the motion to adjourn the public hearing, Mr. Chairman?
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor in closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. We have a couple of presentations tonight. First one we have is Jenny Bennett from the Seneca Falls Library. If you want to come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jenny Burnett, the Director of the Seneca Falls Library. I'm here tonight to thank you folks for your continued support of the five libraries and the Finger Lakes Library System. I do have a video I'm hoping that they will be able to show tonight for you. It's going to sum up some of our results from last year. I'd like you to know, as far as 2023 goes, we've had over 1,000 programs between the five libraries with over 25,000 attendees. So, we're beating last year right now. I'm really excited about that, and we hope that you will continue your support. I think the video really says the rest of what I'd like to say, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Are we putting down the screen and playing a video? Okay, perfect.
And I'll be back here if any of you folks have any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have New York Engineering Services. Going to do a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Bart Brech, and I'm President of New York Engineering Services. We serve 14 states, from New York and Maryland, over to Kansas and Oklahoma. And I've been working with Beth Pardee and Mitch Rowe to put together a consult for bringing broadband to unserved folks in the northwest five towns. So this doesn't include all of Seneca County, just the ones where there's the most opportunity and a lot of unserved folks. The reason you guys hired us is we have an RUS focus, and we do a lot with grant money, both with the state and the federal programs. And we're currently the partner for Yates County and Madison County as they build their reconnect fiber networks to provide fiber for unserved citizens. And we kind of specialize in municipal partnerships. You guys are unique, especially when it comes to spending federal and state money, because that's sort of your jobs already. And so there's some unique facets to that. But really, there's only three real key takeaways to tonight, and that is, how much would it cost to serve the underserved in the five towns I'm going to focus on? And then, the context of this is really, do you want to borrow this money from either the federal or grants? Because you don't, you know, you'll see why these people don't have service today in terms of cost. And the third thing is, this is an à la carte presentation. So we broke each of the five towns into what it would cost just for their town to do this. So this is not an all or nothing type of thing. You can do a pilot program. You can find a commercial partner. There's lots of different ways to kind of eat the elephant that is needing broadband. It's really the fourth utility. And in our consults, it's really the number one thing. You know, it used to be sewer and water, electric, highway. Now it's broadband. That seems to be the thing that does the most for jobs. So I'm going to take you through this. It's 25 slides. I'm going to try to do it in about 15 minutes, because I know your guys' time is valuable. You should have a deck in front of you, so if you want to cheat and read ahead, you're welcome to do that. There's also some files that I've made available to Beth, including a report, and some very detailed KMZs and Excel files. But this is sort of the 10,000-foot level, so off we go. First three slides are basically, what is fiber and why do we use it? The bottom line is that, besides speed and distance, I like to remind people it's glass, so it's impervious to water and storms and things of that nature. And essentially, this copper cable that you see there, it's a 3,600 copper. We have, you know, a 578 fiber. Each of those strands is the width of a human hair and can carry 100 gig. So you just think about the transmission. But the real reason is your home. If you look in your home now, every device you have, including your refrigerator, your microwave, if you've bought one of those in the last few years, your TVs, your iPads, your cell phones, all demand an internet connection. And so, the average American home probably has 25 devices that they have to serve, and so you're going to need at least two antennas on your Wi-Fi router to have that much subnet addresses. When we do one of these consults, we basically have a bunch of decision points. I would just want to review those really quickly, so you understand where our costs come from. There's two types of networks, GPON and Active E. I'll talk to that in a moment. You have to have electronics at a central location, and so we use cabinets or central offices. This building here is actually pretty ideal for the network that we're going to talk through. Buried versus aerial. If you're in the Midwest, it's black soil country, you can bury cable for $3 to $4 a foot. In New York, it's $25 and up per foot, just because of the granite and the rock. And so, even though you have to deal with the big power companies and attachment to their poles, it's still probably a third of the cost to go aerial than buried. That's why you see all of the fiber being hung on poles. It's just very cost-effective. If we do bury fiber, we put it in conduit. We no longer direct bury it, because if it gets cut, you can't repair it. So this fiber, the accountants will tell you, has a 30-year life. In practice, it's a 50-year network that you're building. There's different types of conduit, single duct versus multi-duct. All that is, is a reusable pathway if you're in a buried environment. We always put an extra duct in when we bury, so that was built into these costs. Also, there's redundancy. You'll see, even if we only serve one town, that we do also bring fiber in more than one path. So we're always pathing things in two different directions. In the old days, they used to talk about rings. Now we talk about multiple point-to-point connections. So if you're a hospital, you get an internet connection from two different suppliers that have two different pathways, as opposed to some kind of ring configuration. Another question you have is, when you build fiber in the street, do you serve the homes you pass, or do you serve just the folks that order service? This is kind of tricky, because with federal and state money, you can only serve the customers who qualify. So even if you pass a customer who is served, that address is taken off the list. So when we started this consult, we got a list of unserved addresses and served addresses. I think you guys have seen some of those maps in red and green, but the fact of the matter is, it's the rural folks that don't have the service. If you are in a subdivision where you're 50 or 60 homes per mile, you're likely going to have service. If you're eight to six homes per mile out in the country, you're likely not going to have service. It's as simple as that. The last thing that we have to think about is whether Seneca County wants to own this network, or whether they want to partner with a private network. The three counties that are doing this right now, in the state of New York, Livingston, Madison, and Yates, have all partnered with Empire as a ISP, and they've written a service agreement so that they can have service. And not, they deal with the ownership of the fiber, but not the maintenance and operation. Real quickly, the top is what they call Active E. That's like the old copper network, one fiber per home. The bottom is a GPON, which is a passive, gigabit passive optical network. What that does is it uses prisms to split a single fiber into up to 64 or 32 homes, and it allows you to have less fiber and less ports. The way we design our networks is we size the cable for Active E, but we use GPON splitters in the field in order to reduce the cost of electronics. So you have a future path there. So when we look at our fiber sizes, it is, these networks are based on one fiber per home. Aerial versus buried, we talked a little bit about that. Bearing is great, because it gets you out of the wind, the snow, vehicles, animals, all that kind of stuff, but it's also three times as expensive. So that's why the majority of our networks are aerial, unless there is no aerial, then we go buried. Basically, what we do is we look at all of the homes that need service, and we map them into service areas. Now, I don't think this NOOK is capable of showing you the KMZ files, but that's something you're welcome to look at later. It's essentially a Google Earth map of this network laid out, and shows where all the homes that we are serving in each of the five towns are. Permitting is a big deal. It's one of the reasons people hire engineering consultants. Luckily, in, New York DOT has backed off on a lot of their perm 75, which is any type of fiber built along public right-of-ways that are maintained by them. Used to be, you had to get a licensed surveyor to do that work. Now you can do it with the clearinghouse maps that they have. It's cut the cost probably in the third or fourth, but it still is an eight-to-six-week procedure to get permission to place. Just something to be aware of. And there's things like wetlands and railroad crossings that are specialty items. So essentially, what we did is we came out and drove all the routes for these five towns. We noted, is there good aerial, or do we have to bury? What side of the road? And also, all of the limitations based on permitting. One thing we don't think about a lot, though, is the drop. So for each of these customers that wants to actually take service from a provider, whether it's somebody partnering with Seneca, or somebody who, you know, just some of the ISPs that you have in your area now, you still have to get a service drop to those customers. So you have to include those costs. And they include getting permission from the customer, probably doing a site survey, discovering what types of things they have in the ground, if you have to bury. And you have to convince them to order the service, because they still have to pay for it. And unlike water and cellular and power, it seems like there is a lid to how much people want to pay for internet. So even though it is a necessity, it's still something that we've been able to get relatively cheaply, so... But you do have to connect the houses. I just wanted to take you through the cost of serving just Fayette. It's the largest build that we have in terms of mileage and customers. There's, you can't see that map very well. You can probably see it better on your decks there, but the red houses are the unserved, and the little purple areas are clusters of areas that make up the distribution cable. When you write a grant, you have to separate the cable investment into common network, which is kind of middle mile, if you've heard that term, and distribution network. So all the cable that's in dark red represents cable that's serving customers directly, and then I think it's orange-red for, you have to transit over areas you can't serve in order to get to those areas and connect them. In the case of Fayette, we had 124 customers on that list, and it required one cabinet be set. So this is more of what it looks like, this is probably 80% of your costs, actually building the fiber. So we had 55 miles of aerial and three and a half miles of main lane. So 58.5 miles to serve 124 customers. Also, we have the drops that are, in this case, it worked out to be about 94% were served by aerial, and 6% in Fayette were served by buried, and that's where that split is. But that's $1.3 million. Then we had to put a cabinet out there to house the splitters. We include that in our buried construction, and then $41,000 worth of central office equipment to support those. Our engineering is about 4,000 a mile, and then we survey the drops at $95 each, so this usually makes up about 8% to 10% of the cost, total engineering. And that came in at $245 for Fayette. Went the wrong way. Permitting costs, as I said, this is a big hitter. And we looked at how many poles we felt we would have to replace, how many poles would have to have power make ready, and how many poles would have to have communications make Communication make ready just means you move other cables out of the way, so that you can put your fiber up top. And the replacement rate, we determined to be about 1 in 20. So that's a big number, 1.1 million, but over 58 miles, that's about $3 a foot. And so it still comes in much less than the buried cost, although this is the longest, sometimes it takes six months to a year to get petition from New York Gas and Electric to connect to their poles. Also, when we build the network, the granters, whether it's BEED money or RUS money, they require an inspector be present. And then we also have some admin and legal costs. So the net for Fayette is about $3 million. And it's actually, in my world, not too bad. The problem is, you're only serving 124 customers at this time, and so that's 24,000 per customer. Now, the RUS, as you guys have probably seen, for the reconnect program, theirs, we thought, has probably been about 15,000 to 20,000 per home, if you've looked at their awards. And if you look at the entire, the five folks that we looked at, but I guess, let me take you there real quick. This is the punchline. You can see that for all five towns, it's $21,000 per customer to serve 422 customers. That's actually in the realm of possibility for grant money. Now, the challenges with grant money has been, traditionally, it was 50/50. Reconnect, it went 80/20. NTIA and the BEED, which is that 42 billion that they're going to spread out, I think New York hits about 850 million of it. They're talking 90/10 on that, so there is usually some kind of match element to that. And that's really the challenge for our counties, is to come up with a match. There are some pools of money that are 100% grant. You have to be very competitive to get in there and put that in their intake system and score high enough on their criteria to get that. But that is, for the most part, we usually go in at 100% grant, and we see what we can do in terms of what the feds will award us. But you can kind of see here as well, that if you wanted to do VARIC, you would be, it would be less than $1 million to do that project, and it would have the least cost per customer of 17,000. So let me go back and grab a couple details here. There we go. Just, if we were to do this project, the actual construction of the fiber is probably the thing that goes the quickest. You've got to engineer it. You've got to petition for attachment to poles, and then you actually build it. With two crews, you can build a mile a day. So for a network of 155 miles, which is what you're looking at, you could actually get that done pretty quick. For just Fayette, you're looking at 58 working days, because you would work your buried crew and two aerial crews concurrently, and then the drop crews would come in. So three to four months to actually build the network. But like I said, all of the work and heavy lifting comes before that. This is just a quick map that shows you how those 422 customers fall. You can see it's to the edges of each of the five towns considered. All right. Just a couple of things. If I'm Frontier, or Verizon, or even Empire, or STN, or Spectrum, I'm willing to spend about 2,600 per customer. You can see if this project comes in at about 21,000, that they're not going to build that unless they get some kind of subsidy. Now, these ISPs will go after the grant money as well, as facility-based providers, but they have other low-hanging fruit, probably. They're going to build to where there's density. The folks that live at the edges and in the rural areas are going to have to be served by grant money. Also, I looked at the cost per mile built for the five towns, 8.8 million. Over 155 miles, that's about 57,000 per mile. That's right in the range of what the grant money is getting for Madison and Yates. So that seems to be about what the expectation is. One note is, your property values do increase if you have fiber, and so that is, for municipality, it's tax revenue. Just wanted, I had to say some good news in there. And so this is what I was talking about, to do all five towns, the engineering would probably take, when I say a season, it's really a year, but about eight months, and then permitting to attach to the poles, about a year, and then the actual construction, about eight months. So most of these projects, from start to finish, you need about two and a half years. Right now, RUS Reconnect is asking their projects to be completed in three years. Just a couple of thoughts about the different models that we have facilitated. What Yates and Madison did was simply, they went out and got grant money, and then they issued an RFP, which we were selected as engineers. Madison County also selected another company to do their project management, so we work with them. You have a choice as a municipality. A lot of folks do just conduit structure. Now, that doesn't really apply to New York too much, because you guys have to have a lot of aerial plant due to cost. Also, you can buy conduit and fiber and have a private partner, which is essentially what they're doing in Yates and Madison with Empire. I do have one county in Kentucky that's doing wholesale fiber induct, meaning they're buying it and they're making it available to all providers, and they got the grant to do that for about 25 miles. Be interesting to see how that plays out, because that was talking with each of the providers to say, what route do you need? The county will build it, and you guys will share it. So that's more of a open network. Other counties have actually owned it themselves and operated it through a subsidiary, because if you own a water company or a power company, that's something you can do pretty quickly. And there was one, in Steuben County, they actually put it under a 401 nonprofit type of company. And then Livingston, Empire is actually the owner of that fiber. They were the ones that put in the bid, not the county, but they partnered with the county. I've talked a little bit about reconnect, RUS. You've heard ARDOF, that's the FCC, and then the BEED money is the big one that's coming through the state, the New York Broadband Office, and that's supposed to be let out in 2024, 20% per year. So for New York, you're probably looking at 150 to 200 million per year in a bucket that is intentionally for these types of projects. The wireless players and the cellular players continue to try to get this grant money. Pretty much, they're to the point now that they're saying you have to... Pretty much, they're to the point now that they're saying you have to deliver one hundred, one hundred service, which means it has to be fiber. So my guess is, in twenty twenty-four, NTIA will say, it's got to be fiber, we're not going to pay for wireless or cellular networks. They're just, they don't provide the speeds, and they don't provide the reliability. So what's happened is, traditionally, you'd have ISPs and telephone companies compete for this business. Now you see power companies, REMCs, municipalities, and other third-party network builders petitioning for this money. When it's a hundred percent grant, that means anyone who can build a network can ask for the money. Just a few things here, I think this is my last slide. You know, continue, the fact that you have the will to ask me to come and do some pricing and costing for you is good. The folks that are successful in getting grant money and building these networks, you have to have a broadband champion, you have to have the will to do it. The other thing is, is you've got to talk to your citizens and make sure that those four hundred and twenty-two that are underserved are loud and proud, and they give you that feedback that they need internet. You'd hate to spend this kind of money and go out there and have people not sign up for service. So one of the things we talk about in the report is, you know, doing constant customer feedback surveys to kind of take their temperature on, is broadband really a problem for you? We need to know. And then I have the four Ps. Partner, you're not going to do this alone, you're probably going to have to find an ISP to help you. Prioritize, you've got five towns here you're looking at. Do it in phases, or pick a single town to be a pilot, because a lot of times with federal and state money, if you can successfully obtain grant money, turn around, spend it, build a network in a small scale, then they give you points for the next submission, because you've already proven your stewardship of that money. So, and you might as well go after this money. I think that municipalities are kind of uniquely situated to be really good stewards of this money. I would almost say that, you know, there's not the same profit motive, because as a government entity, your motive is to serve the customers and the county, and not so much, you're not worried about making money, although your commercial partner probably is. But anything you can do to lower those costs of entry for the empires, or the STNs of the world will also pay dividends. And then, as long as you have a grant writer or an RFP writer, you can go after some of this money. So I think that concludes my presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
I have one for you. So we do Fayette, say we were to do Fayette, which is one of the things. So we have a remote cabinet out there, but we have no way to get that remote cabinet information. So we need is, would have to be the price for a head-end somewheres, which is not in your survey.
Well, it actually is, but, so the way we put the central office is, we would probably put it in this building, and I couldn't show you the maps, because I don't have the KMZ, but all five of the towns would be tethered to this building, and then we would have a transport to the cabinet. There's actually a cabinet that would be placed in Fayette to serve Fayette and work. There's one place in Seneca, and then I believe there's one placed in Junius to serve Junius in Waterloo, just because of the distances. So, but that, I guess I didn't put that in this presentation. It is in the report, though, if you want to. So, good question. Yes?
No. On the map here, these underserved, not served properties, are you sure that they warrant?
Excellent question. Yeah, they have something called the FCC address fabric, okay? And they were the one, I think this list was produced and given to the county, right? I mean, it was based on, here is what we're willing to fund. So if you ask for money to serve one of these four hundred and twenty-two homes, we'll give it to you, if you, you know, pass all the tests. Yeah, you can take a horse to water, you can't make him drink. So I think it's really important to reach out to those folks on that list and say, hey, would you buy it if it were offered to you? Because what you'll also find is, there's folks that are on that list that are claimed to be served, that aren't served. They may have spectrum or something, they may be at the end of a lead, and at five o'clock at night, they're getting five meg on their hundred gig circuit, right, or whatever. So I, I think that finding, a lot of the work we've done is trying to prove addresses right or wrong. I would venture to say there's a lot more than four hundred and twenty-two unserved in those five towns right now, because that works both ways. But absolutely, if those four hundred and twenty-two folks are happy without internet, don't build the network. Yeah, I think that in the stuff I sent you, there was an Excel spreadsheet, we had broken them down by town and by served and unserved. So that was sort of the core of our consult, but yeah, you guys should take a look at that and do some research on it. All right, I left a few of my business cards with Beth. If you guys think of a question down the road, feel free to get her, my cell number from her, and I'll be happy to speak with any of you on any questions you have, so.
Thank you very much.
Just so everybody knows, we do have as reports and all associated documents, and I forwarded them to Amanda earlier, she will share them with the rest of the board.
Getting the hang of it, Aunt Amanda?
All right, before we go on, let the record show Supervisor Hayes, Supervisor Hyson, Supervisor Trout is now in attendance. Okay, our petitioner, we had one tonight, they decided to not speak, so next up is open privilege of the floor. If anyone would like to come up and speak at the podium. You could please state your name for the record.
Susan Ottenweller. I just want to read a section of the open meeting laws. Pursuant to Article Six, any proposed resolution, law, rule, regulation, policy, or any amendment here that is scheduled to be the subject of discussion by a public body during an open meeting shall be made available at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, during which the records will be discussed. Such information shall also be posted on the website, and copies will be made available to the public. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Okay, thank you. Can get a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty-second?
Second.
And September thirteenth?
Second.
All right, guys, first second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Reports of special committees. Anyone have anything they'd like to say? Okay, moving on. I don't have any remarks tonight. County manager, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of small items. I'd like to just give everybody the heads up for the open meeting for November fourteenth. As a reminder, we will be down there for the dual county seat meeting. Additionally, Operation Green Light, November sixth to the eleventh, will be lighting up in support of veterans and returning service members. I welcome any ideas anybody would have for input, to include all my respective towns and other municipalities here, that would like to light up any sort of their buildings. So would like to get the word out, get the message out. We do have bulbs here available, we purchased last year, as well as green film for other lighting, if anyone is interested to receive it from the county building, and that's all.
Thank you. County attorney, do you have anything tonight? Okay, thank you. Communications?
Communications eighty-one through one hundred have been received and filed.
Thank you very much. Okay. First up is number fourteen, Supervisor Partee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors adopts a resolution to issue a request for qualifications for engineering services for the Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number fifteen, Supervisor Partee.
Seneca County Board of Supervisors to authorize initial actions to create a public nonprofit five oh one C three local development corporation to leverage collaboration with public and private partners to address the needs and objectives identified in the Seneca County Economic Development Strategy and the Housing Needs Assessment Report.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, number sixteen, Supervisor Borst.
Board approves ten E eleven electronic health record contract renewal.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Seventeen, Supervisor Borst.
County manager authorized and directed to sign contracts with FLH Medical PC and Finger Lakes Community Health for STD testing and treatment services.
Support.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Eighteen, Supervisor Borst.
Clerk of the Board to advertise for office for the eighteen public hearing.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number nineteen, Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors approve appointment of Finger Lakes Workforce Investment Board member.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty, Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors authorizes use of opioid settlement funds to support four-town community center-proposed activities in support of substance abuse prevention among adults and youth in the community.
Support.
Got a second? Multiple seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-one, Supervisor Borst.
Board accepts Department of Human Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Certified Community Behavioral Health Center Planning, Development, and Implementation Grant.
Support.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Twenty-one B Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors proclaim the month of October as National Chiropractic Health Month.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Supervisor Brunel, twenty-two.
Resolution to accept FY twenty twenty-three reimbursing management performance grant.
Support.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-three.
Resolution to accept FY twenty-three State Homeland Security Program SHPS SP SLETPP Grant.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-four.
Resolution supporting direct pay reimbursement of ambulance service.
Support.
Lots of seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, thank you. Supervisor Jeff Trout, number twenty-five.
Board of Supervisors approve the reclassification of psychiatric social worker one to psychiatric social worker two in the mental health department.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Twenty-six.
Board of Supervisors approve the reclassification of staff resources assistant one to staff resources assistant two in the codes department.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-seven.
With great pride, the Board of Supervisors appoint Amanda Vavra clerk to the Board of Supervisors.
Support.
All support. Any discussion? Want to change your minds? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Number twenty-eight.
Board of Supervisors approve changing probation director two from grade seven to grade eight on the management salary schedule.
Support.
Yeah, lots of support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty-nine.
Board of Supervisors approve a resolution to adopt local law seven of the year twenty twenty-three, setting salaries for current elected officials, county public officers, and previously designated senior county personnel for the year twenty twenty-three, and the application of the Seneca County twenty twenty-four non-bargaining unit and management salary schedule to said positions.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, number thirty, Supervisor Reynolds.
Resolution to introduce county local law H of two thousand twenty-three, a local law adopting the real property tax exemption for Cold War veterans pursuant to real property tax law four fifty-eight B.
Support.
Lots of support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thirty-one.
Board of Supervisors authorizes contracts with affiliate organizations for two thousand twenty-four.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number thirty-two, Supervisor Reynolds.
A resolution to introduce Seneca County Local Law I of two thousand twenty-three to authorize and allocate surplus sales tax revenue in excess of budgetary revenue estimates to the towns and villages of Seneca County.
Support.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, next up is thirty-two B Supervisor Reynolds.
Yes, I have that one here, too. Board of Supervisors authorizes amendments to the two thousand twenty-three Seneca County budget.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, any unfinished business? All right, new business. Supervisor Don Trout, Rule twenty-nine, please.
I'd like to enact, under Rule twenty-nine, all motions and resolutions that will fall under any such motion or rule.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favors on the Rule twenty-nine?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. First up, we have Supervisor Partee.
Board of Supervisors authorizes to apply for and accept the Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Coalition Grant.
Support.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next up is Supervisor Borst.
Supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life veteran status.
Support.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Got a second? Any discussion about this? Supervisor for, no? Okay. All right, anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other business for the board tonight? Special order of the day, Supervisor Don Trout.
Yeah, special order of the day, baby.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.